Thank you. Welcome to our June 27, 2013 Gilbert Town Council Meeting. I call the meeting to order. We will begin with an invocation and pledge of allegiance. As noted on the agenda, the invocation may be offered by a person of any religion, faith, belief, or non-belief, as well as council members. A list of volunteers is maintained by the town clerk. An interested person should contact the clerk for further information. The invocation will be offered by Councilmember Jared Taylor, after which Councilmember Victor Peters will introduce the individual who will lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Those who are here in council chambers, we invite you to please arise. Thank you.
Heavenly Father, we're grateful for this beautiful day that we've been given. We're grateful for these favorable circumstances which we were able to meet tonight in council meeting. We pray that we can have Thy influence in our decision-making and in our thoughts and follow the example of our Son Jesus Christ, in Whose name that we pray this evening, in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Mayor, a young man by the name of Jake Smith has offered to lead us in the pledge. Go ahead.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much, Jake.
Thank you. Our town clerk, Kathy Templeton, will now conduct the roll call.
Mayor Lewis.
Here.
Vice Mayor Cooper.
Here.
Councilmember Cook.
Here.
Councilmember Daniels.
Here.
Councilmember Peterson.
Here.
Councilmember Ray.
Here.
Councilmember Taylor.
Here.
Formerest present.
We move to our presentations and proclamations. We have two items. And maybe I'll say this while I'm thinking of it before we get to those two. We have started late tonight, and thank you for your patience. So, we're starting late tonight because we just honored two individuals in our Operation Welcome Home program. And we continue to thank our veterans, those who service locally, and our police, fire departments, and other community leaders who serve in volunteer positions. That kind of segues into our first agenda item. But before doing that, it is a week, and the next few days where we are going to be celebrating our freedom and thanking those who serve our country. We invite the community, in case you've not seen this notification, this Sunday night at 7:00 PM at the Mission Community Church, will be a free, community, patriotic music program. And it will help us get that spirit of patriotism that will lead us to our Thursday, July 4th fireworks show, which will take place at Central Christian Community Church. And again, the community is invited. In addition to being at Central Christian, at the nearby Campbell Verde High School, out on the lawn, families and individuals are able to come, as well as the Gilbert Soccer Fields, which are also nearby. So, happy 4th of July. And now, back to agenda item number one, Gilbert Feeding Families. Councilmember Daniels will give the details on that and invite the committee to come up in just a minute, which I thank the committee for so great of an effort. It's inspiring what they have done. The last day in April, started off our month-long Gilbert Feeding Families program, and I had the opportunity with federal and county and state leaders at the Albertsons Market at Warner and Lindsay to have the start of the campaign with a bagging competition. We declared it an official Olympic event held here in Gilbert, and county supervisor Danny Barney was declared the winner. Of course, I'm practicing my bagging, and I'll be looking for a rematch next year. But for this year, we have much to be grateful for with the efforts. And Councilmember Daniels, can you give us a few more details?
Thank you, Mayor. It truly was a privilege of mine to be able to serve on the Gilbert Feeding Families Committee this year. I was so grateful to work alongside tremendous town employees. There's a great video that we'd like to show you. Capture a little bit of the spirit of the team and all of the efforts that were made by our town staff. We couldn't have done it without the support of our town leadership and all of those members of the committee. So, we'll watch the video, and then we're going to make a few of them come up and turn red. So, it's good.
Thirty-one days collecting food. For the Gilbert Feeding Families Food Drive benefited the United Food Bank. At the end of the month of donations, Gilbert residents and town employees are certainly proving their generosity.
Our goal was 50,000 meals, which is a tall order. But the town of Gilbert definitely pulled through.
Councilmember Jen Daniels spoke at the finale event, where more than 50 boxes from municipal buildings, fire stations, schools, and private buildings were weighed and loaded. And cash donations counted with the help of the MidFirst Bank Coin Van.
This food will come back to our friends here in Gilbert, so that the folks who just end up with too much lump at the end of the money have a helping hand.
Any donations above and beyond the goal go to the victims of the Oklahoma tornadoes who need all the help they can get during this tragic time. And Gilbert did go above and beyond.
You did reach 50,000 meals in donations. And that really is a tribute to each one of you. The even better news is that you did actually break your goal. And your Oklahoma donation is $1,529. Congratulations.
And with help from Hunter Contracting, Albertsons, and MidFirst Bank, Gilbert families will get the food they need.
We are blessed to have this partnership. We couldn't do it without you folks. So, thank you all so very, very much. Thank you.
This is Gilbert Digital.
We'd like to thank our Gilbert Digital team who's hiding in the booth in the back for all of their work to put that together. We appreciate them. And at this time, we'd like to bring Ian Malar up quickly. Ian is our fearless committee leader. And when I say fearless, he went above and beyond on everything that he did. So, we have a certificate of appreciation for you, Ian. I'll read it. "For going the extra mile in leading the 2013 Gilbert Feeding Families Community Food Drive. Without Ian's high level of commitment and inspiring leadership, the food drive would not have been the great success that it was. On behalf of the Gilbert Town Council, we extend our sincere appreciation to Ian and applaud him for his leadership, generous spirit, and commitment to ending hunger." Thank you, Ian. And at this time-- Now Ian has to talk.
No, like Jen said, with the help of Gilbert Digital, this really became a bigger accomplishment this year. And so, thank you to everybody a part of Gilbert Digital. And with the help of town leadership and council, we were able to form a great committee from all across staff. And I really appreciate everybody, and especially Jen, for helping us out and coming on board. And thank you, Mayor Lewis, for doing such a great job representing Gilbert in your Bag Off.
At this time, we'd like to have Mary Jo Kuzmic come up. And as a side note, Mary Jo is celebrating 20 years of service to the town. We're very proud of her and all of her contributions. Mary Jo's going to recognize the partners that helped make this possible.
Thanks so much, Jen, and to everybody else who helped with this. So, we have some partners that we would like to recommend and honor at this time. But first, we'd like to have Jason Matthews, the representative from the United Food Bank, come up. And we also would like to recognize Eric Smith from Albertsons for coming up for his annual support of donating $5,000 to the United Food Bank and for hosting the Kickoff Bag Off event on April 30. In addition, we'd like to bring up Georgia Pace from MidFirst Bank. She has a check in the amount of $1,698.46 to Jason Matthews of the United Food Bank. MidFirst Bank matched $750 in employee donations by providing their matching coin van at the event on the weigh-in event on June 3. We'd also like to thank and mention Santan Chick-fil-A and Over Easy for providing breakfast that morning at the weigh-in event. So, now Jason Matthews would like to present something to the mayor and council.
Well, very quickly, I just want to thank each and every one of you, Mayor Lewis, Councilmember Daniels, the entire members of council, and city staff, and everyone here for your tremendous generosity. This effort is just overwhelming. I know that if Bob Evans, our president-CEO, was here today--he's a big guy, but he also is a very sentimental guy. He'd probably choke up and start crying. But we are all so incredibly overwhelmed by the generosity of the Gilbert community. And I think this is a testament that when we, together as a community, that can come together, we can make a tremendous impact on those that are at a point of crisis and that need that extra little help to get back into self-sufficiency. So, with that, we would like to be able to present and actually represent our highest honor, actually, which is our 10,000-meal club, which you guys won last year, you won this year, and I'm hoping you're going to win next year as well for your amazing contribution, providing 50,000-plus meals to those that are hungry in the town of Gilbert.
And we're Cook, please, agenda item number two.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a very exciting award for me, because we have a very exciting, high-performance team in Gilbert that received this. And I would like Dawn Irvine, our budget director, to come. And she can actually share more about the details of this particular award. But again, the many hours I spent with the budget team, we have, I believe, the finest budget team in the state of Arizona. So, can we extend a wonderful applause to our budget team here in Gilbert? With that, Dawn, would you share a little bit about this award?
Well, thank you, Councilmember Cook, and thank you to all that really helped to make this possible. When Councilmember Cook refers to the budget team, it really is more than just what you would know as the Budget Department or the Office of Management and Budget. It's everybody throughout the town, because ours is truly a collaborative process. So, to all of the department directors, to all of the staff members that participated this, to the IT department, in particular, for their work on the systems and tools and forms that helped to make this process successful. And of course, to the budget team, I'm very, very thankful to be a part of such a great team. Thank you. Absolutely. So, the distinguished budget presentation award that you see here is presented to us from the Government Finance Officers Association. These budget documents are reviewed from all over the world to meet certain criteria. And to receive this award, you must meet each of these criteria. So, it's a pretty extensive process to go through, and it's a very thorough and complex document at the end of it. But we're very, very proud of the result.
Well, we're very proud of the entire team here in Gilbert. So, again, one more applause
Before we get to communication from citizens, is there a motion to take off our coats? That wasn't on the agenda. I hope we don't get in trouble for that. Thank you. On the agenda, communication from citizens. Members of the public may comment on matters within the jurisdiction of the town, but not on the agenda. The council's response is limited to responding to criticism, asking staff to review a matter commented upon, or asking that a matter be put on a future agenda. Vice Mayor Cooper, do we have some requests tonight?
Mayor, we do. We have one request, and it's from Joe Gusek.
Joe, if you could come forward. And Joe, it's good to have you back. And as you saw before, if you can state your name, and for the record, if you're a Gilbert resident, then you'll be given three minutes, please.
I'll do my best. I'm going to speed read tonight. My name is Joe Gusek, and I am a Gilbert resident. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, fellow council members, town staff, fellow citizens, and guests. Last time I came and I told you our children needed your help, and that education is the best defense of our country's democracy. The facts are the facts that our country spends 22.1% of the GDP on education, which is near the top in the world. The facts are the facts that our country spends, on average, $10,560 per student on education, which is always in the top three, depending on the report. The facts are the facts that our students' test scores are, at best, just in the middle of the pack. The facts are the facts that Arizona, we spend, on average, $7,666 per student on education. I'm not here to tell any of us to spend more. I'm a less-is-more person, but, and only but, with the right guidance, the right co-sharing of resources, I want us to work smarter, not harder. Let me share two examples of what our town is doing today. First, the advertising flyers in the town's utility bills. This is a brilliant demonstration of using common resources to spend less and produce more. The town and business partners, spending less on postage and driving opportunities to those business partners and providing them the opportunity to make more, and all the while educating our citizens. That is smart government. The flyer that is at our local town recitation, this one is from Free Stone Center. "The program provides businesses an opportunity to utilize our town facilities for a nominal fee. The city gets a little revenue and helps businesses create brand awareness and allow the businesses a chance to grow. Once again, providing the opportunity to educate our citizens on services, product, and more. This is innovative, smart government, thinking while using the power of all of our resources." Guess what? The town is in the business of educating citizens every day. Let's do a little exercise here. When you drive home tonight, after you get out of the parking lot, please close your eyes. Take your hands off the steering wheel, and don't use your knees to steady the wheel, and push on the gas. I know you can't speak, so I'm pretty confident that you would not do that. Why not? Well, may I suggest that none of us would do this, because we would crash and damage our cars. Worse, we might hurt ourselves. Worse yet, we might hurt others and more property. Last but not least, we might do something catastrophic. I trust you would never do that. Last time I told you I have an economics degree for the past 46-- Sorry, no economics. For the past 46 years of my life, I've seen more and more people believe capitalism is the driver and democracy is the vehicle. May I suggest we take a step back and look at this in a different way. The vehicle is capitalism, and the driver is democracy. In a democracy, we elect officials with the ideal to conduct our public businesses efficiently. Please remember, you are the driver. Please keep your hands on the wheel and get us to our destination safely. I know this is not necessarily your direct job, but you have shown me proof that you are in the education business. Please help, please help. I've given you some ideas and facts and figures. May I suggest that we all help our schools and innovate and protect our democracy. And at the end of the day-- At the end of the day, we always need to spend the right amount. Not one penny too little, not one penny too much. This is what our town is already doing today. The greatest defense of our democracy will always, always be education first. You are all American citizens first, and always will be first. Help by leading. Please lead by helping, because it's everyone's job, not just yours or mine. The only way this can help happen is if our town always and continuously educates through the power of suggestion to everyone from cradle to grave that education comes first. You used the power of suggestion with Shop Gilbert. Now, may I suggest you use the power of suggestion for Education First Coalition. Please do not get me wrong, our education system here in Arizona and our town has come a long way in the last 10 years. But we still have a long way to go, and the world is speeding up. Do not wait till it's too late. Keep your hands on the wheel. I will leave you with this quote that I recently learned. "It's more important to focus on what is right than who is right." Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Cooper, any other requests?
No, Mayor. I don't have any other cards up here.
Thank you. We'll move to the consent calendar. Items listed on the consent calendar may be approved by a single motion unless removed at the request of council for further discussion or action. Other items on the agenda may be added to the consent calendar and approved under a single motion. Vice Mayor Cooper, what requests do we have on the consent calendar?
Mayor, I move that we approve the consent calendar, items four to 37, noting that nine has been removed. Minor edits to the minutes on item 37 have been made. We will pull items 10, 24A, 28, 29, and 32 for discussion, and bring item 43 forward with a recommendation from Councilmember Daniels.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Cooper. I move that we consider the appointment to the Planning Commission of two regular members with the terms beginning June 28, 2013, and ending June 1, 2017, as Jennifer Whitman and David Caveney, and one alternate member with a term beginning June 28, 2013, and ending June 1, 2014, as Kyle Powell.
Thank you. So, there's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. With that motion and second, please vote. Thank you. That's approved with a 7-0 vote. Vice Mayor Cooper, I believe number 10 was the first item, and that was requested by Mayor Lewis. And Town Manager Banjo, this is related to our Phoenix Mesa Gateway Airport and the addition of the city of Apache Junction. For the public, for the council, if you could give just a quick overview of what agenda item number 10 is all about.
Mayor, members of the council, I'd be happy to. This is to add the city of Apache Junction to the Phoenix Mesa Gateway Airport Authority Board of Directors. They will become a voting member of the board. They will be making an initial capital contribution to the airport authority, and then will have an ongoing role in support of the airport. It was the feeling of the senior managers that this was a good move for the airport. Apache Junction is in close proximity to Phoenix Mesa Gateway. It's an important part of that community's future, and it will be good to get their input and guidance as we direct the growth of the airport and the expansion of the airport to the benefit of all of us.
Thank you. Any additional discussion before we entertain a motion? Please.
Mayor, I move that we approve item number 10.
Okay. With that motion, second, please vote. That is approved with a 7-0 vote. Agenda item 24A, Councilmember Daniels.
Thank you, Mayor. I wasn't physically present at the last council meeting, and I just wanted to make a statement of appreciation to Susan Goodwin and her team. I wanted to make sure that it was public, and we appreciate the years and countless hours of service that you and your team have provided the town of Gilbert. Very grateful that you're continuing to help and assist us in the transition, and as always, exhibiting the highest level of professionalism, and we appreciate that so much. So, forgive me for taking a few moments of the public's time, but I felt strongly that she needed to be publicly thanked, and I wish I would have been there last council meeting physically to do that.
Thank you. And now, we are referring to Susan as special counsel, which can't get better than that. Thank you. So, I will entertain a motion.
Move to approve, Mayor.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second, please vote. Thank you. It may be fitting that item where the town manager can talk about current events. Town Manager Banjo, that last agenda item had something to do with a new member of our team. Is this a good time to introduce town attorney? Please.
Mayor, members of the council, it's my pleasure to introduce the town of Gilbert's new town attorney, Michael Hamlin. Michael, maybe if you'd like to say a few words to introduce yourself to our community.
Thank you, Patrick, and thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. Yes, I'm Michael Hamlin. I'm proud to be here, serving as the town attorney, and excited about the opportunity. I've been a Gilbert resident for 25 years, and worked as an Assistant Chief Counsel and Assistant City Attorney for the city of Phoenix for 27 years. Thank you.
Thank you. Our special counsel, Susan, will let you know that every now and then the mayor just kind of jumps but comes back. And so, we're back. That was agenda item 46. And we return to agenda item 28, Councilmember Peterson.
Mayor, I was just hoping to get a recap from staff on where this-- Very briefly, on where this is going, as far as how long. And this is our second extension of this, and I know there's been some interest in the public in some of these efforts. And so, maybe some reassurance that we're not going to keep going down this road would help.
Mayor, council members, Deputy Town Manager Mark Sciosic, I'm standing in for Nicole on this. Nicole Daley, our interim Public Works Director. As Councilmember Peterson did indicate, this is the second change order on a staffing and management agreement with CH2M to assist us in the staffing in the water area division of the Public Works Department. As the council communication and the staff report talks about is that we have been working over the course of the last eight months to shore up some of the positions and trying to fill some of the needs we have in the department. At this time, we've been unable to fill some of those key positions. It's talked about in the staff report. And we're going to change our approach a little bit. And rather than using a broad application process for some of the key positions that we're looking at, we're going to do a targeted solicitation. And we're confident that we'll be able to land the right person to fill these essential-- People to fill these essential positions. What staff is asking for council to consider tonight is to extend the time that was authorized under the first change order through essentially the end of, I believe it's September. And within the amount that was originally authorized, there were some savings that were realized in terms of not needing to expend the extent and magnitude of funds that were anticipated. So, what we are asking council to do is to extend the time, and the contingency transfer that's being requested is simply to move the money or the appropriation that would be authorized in fiscal 14 that would have otherwise been spent in fiscal 13.
So, I just want to clarify that even though the time has been lengthened, the amount of money we're spending on this transitionary period has not increased. Is that correct?
It is no-- Councilmember Peterson, Mayor, it is no greater than what was proposed as the total of the first change order. This is an extension of time.
Okay. Well, with that, I'm anxious to continue to the next stage. I know staff is as well, but I thought that was beneficial for the public to understand some of those things. So, with that, I'm ready to make a motion, Mayor.
Please.
Mayor, I move to approve item 28.
Is there a second?
Second.
Approved with a 7-0 vote. Thank you. We move to agenda item 29. Councilmember Peterson and Councilmember Taylor, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Just two points. One is, I definitely support the CERT program. I'm CERT certified. I think it's a great program that our community will greatly benefit by. I'd just like to fund this locally. Just again, have trouble, you know, with a lot of the federal funding, with our federal deficit, you know, running 17 trillion and more. And all the 47 cents of each of these dollars is going to be borrowed, as Councilmember Cook pointed out last time. So, we've got the money to fund it locally. That's where I'd like to see it. So, thank you.
Other discussion? Councilmember Cook?
As before, if for some reason this doesn't pass, I would love to see that these funds come out of our general fund. And I know that when I chatted with staff about this, this actually could have been an item that could have been part of our budget. So, it's something that maybe in the future, you know, because we do agree how important this is, that maybe we include it in our next budget.
Thank you. Councilmember Peterson?
Mayor, I echo that as well. If for some reason the grant part does not pass, I would encourage an item brought forward to use contingency if we need to for this program. I think it's great. It utilizes, leverages volunteers. I think it's a great benefit to our community.
Thank you. Councilmember Daniels?
I think I fill a broken record coming on. I apologize. I would encourage those individuals who still feel very strongly about federal funds, and I think we all do. Again, we all are worried about the federal deficit. But come forward with some policy-level discussion that we can have at the council level that would allow us to apply some strategic rules to these types of federal grants. And with that policy in place, I would be more than happy to support it. But as we pick and choose what is and isn't worthy of federal dollars, I think there's some gaps in there that we need to fill. And so, while I would be more than happy to, again, support this with local dollars, the double taxation that does occur when both federal-- double taxation that does occur when both federal and state and local taxes are paid does become an issue for our citizens. And so again, bring forward a policy, help us know what is and isn't federal dollar worthy, and more than happy to support some type of effort at that level.
Thank you. Councilmember Taylor, and then Councilmember Peterson?
Just to that point, Mayor, I think you invited this, that recommendation to be on the retreat. Is that still what I understand?
If not on the retreat, we're capturing topics that will make sure do have an audience, and I believe that one is on a list.
It is.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you. With that discussion, I will entertain a motion.
Mayor, I'd like to move that we approve that item. Which number is it? Twenty, item number 29 is presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. With that motion and second, please vote. Approved with a 4-3 vote. Thank you. To the council, Agenda Item 32 is the last consent item, and I know that there are some changes that are going to be discussed that took place even this afternoon that we want to make sure the public hears about. I did ask Vice Mayor Cooper if we had any requests to speak at the public hearing, and there are none. And so I'm wondering, as a council, if there are individuals here for the public hearing, if we should move forward with that and then come back to 32, which is more, I think, of an internal discussion. Would you be okay with that? Okay, so we will come back to 32, and I will move to the public hearing. There are no requests to speak, and let me just look in council chambers and confirm, are there any citizens here that wish to speak on Agenda Items 38 to 41? I will proceed to open the public hearing for Agenda Items 38 through 41. I'll ask council members, are there any items, any of those items that council members wish to discuss? I will close the public hearing on Agenda Items 38 through 41 and entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move that we approve Items 38 through 41 as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
With that motion and second, please vote. They are approved with a 7-0 vote. Thank you. Let's return to Agenda Item 32, and I believe as a council, this would be a good one to turn to our town leadership and ask for a quick overview, and then I'll come back to the council, see if there's some specific items. And with the overview, some of the feedback I received even from the afternoon discussions, if that could be included for the council, any of the council members that had not been given that update.
My name is Jennifer Uria. I'm the Employee Relations Administrator. Tonight you have before you the proposed rules. This was developed through a collaborative effort from the employees, receiving input from them through a mechanism using our employee internet, the other types of input that we received from supervisors, managers, and the management team, as well as we sought input from the employee advisory committees through, that are part of the exclusive employee The proposed changes kind of fall into three themes. The first one being language clarification. We're also talking about formalizing current practices as well as policy changes. In May, council approved revisions to the municipal code, Chapter 2. The language recommendations to the Town Manager section of this conforms to those revisions to go ahead and have the Town Manager authorized to create and eliminate positions. The next area with the pay plan, revisions to this section in the personnel rules talks about council approval. However, this is going to go through the budget process. The pay plans are going to go through the budget process, so any revisions can be captured there. It was also initially proposed that there would be a change to the notification of potential layoff. However, there have been changes to that, and the language will be no longer deleted. Council will be notified 60 days out if there's a potential layoff. Using Theme 1, the key staff, one of the areas is the Town Attorney will now be identified as one of the key staff members. The media inquiries process, the language here is reflecting that media inquiries made to the town will be notification to the Office of Communications and to the Department Director of that area. Post offer physicals are being expanded to both part-time and seasonal temporary employees. And then with sworn police probationary period, if a current employee were to become a sworn police officer, part of that would be, once they, finish their, yeah, they would have serve another probationary period for 12 months, once they became a sworn police officer. Okay. The next area is talking about policy changes. The hearing officer role will change with these revisions. Part of it is that the hearing officer decision will go from a final unbinding to a recommendation to the deputy town manager. The overtime calculation revisions that were proposed have been reviewed for, have been removed for future discussion.
Just to interject, was that from the afternoon meetings today? That particular item?
That was, we clarify, Mayor and the council, we clarified that language. The intent of that was always just if there is media contact with an employee to let their department know. Oh, I'm sorry. Excuse me, I'm on the wrong item. Yes, we are pulling that from tonight's agenda, Mayor. We'd like to have more time to talk with our employee groups about that. As part of the process for the upcoming year, you tasked us to create a system for the, for communication, solicit feedback and input on items with the MOUs going away, and so we'd like to get that set up and then take this to it and then bring it back to you.
Okay. And the reason why I emphasize that to the council, Town Manager Baner may have had a chance to talk to all seven of us, but that was from an afternoon meeting today where that recommendation is coming, and so that possibly is new information, and I wanted to make sure the public knew that too, because that was not in the original documentation. So thank you.
Mayor Lewis, just a little clarification. I believe the first two lines of that section, 5.4, 4.4, 2.1, will be changed. Those are just changing the title, the descriptions of the.
Thank you.
The rest are being, the rest of the changes won't be made at this time.
Great. And when it comes time for the motion, I'll ask you again to just clarify what is being voted on and what is not. Thank you.
Okay. And the last area, talking about social media and social networking. This is an entirely new section to the personnel rules, and the intent here is to allow employees to use social media and networking as long as it is part of their job responsibilities. So with that, are there any questions?
Thank you. And Susan, it may be that I come back, there were 20 items that were proposed changes or additions to the personnel manual, and so of those 20, I think you just clarified that, are there two that are being taken out?
There are two changes that would not be made. The motion would, should say, a motion to approve the resolution, with the exception that the changes in Section 3.2.4.1 will not be made, and that in paragraph, Section 5.4.2, 5.4.4.2.1, the changes will not be made. Let's see. The changes in the first two lines will be made, but the changes in the, after the first two lines will not be made.
Okay. So half of that one?
Yes. Everything after the first two lines, the changes will not be made.
Okay. So summary again, 3.2, 4.1, all of it, and then 5.4, 2.2, 1. The first half stays, the second half goes away. Okay.
The second half stays unchanged for now.
The second half stays unchanged?
As you've got it in your packet, it's stricken, and the lines, we will not be striking that language.
Got it. Thank you. So with that, 18 and a half of the proposals are staying, and to the council, on those 18 and a half are their discussion items, items to clarify. Councilmember Daniels?
Thank you, Mayor. A couple of things, and I've already brought this up with Jennifer, and I gave Patrick, our Town Manager, also a heads up that part of my concern on this, and when we made these changes in May to our code, I don't want to be, I don't think that politics should be intimately involved in the day-to-day operations of the town. I feel very strongly about that. We need to stay at the policy level. However, I do feel like transparency and the public having a knowledge of what's going on internally within the organization is very, very important. And so I've asked Patrick with team to come up with some type of mechanism to allow us to report out on those changes that are personnel changes or personnel-related. I'll leave it up to them as far as frequency, but I think at a minimum, it would make sense to do it quarterly, that the public have an opportunity to view some type of document as a report out to council so that they know what's going on within their local government. And so that specifically has to do with 1.3.2. Mayor Lewis, on 1.8.2, I did talk to, and if anyone's following along, that's, I'm just going down in the administrative provisions. This adds the language to require employees to be referred to the Office of Communications and the Department Director for all media inquiries. I would like to make a quick statement with the confirmation of Jennifer, that we are not taking away any First Amendment rights by any of our employees, but if they are speaking on behalf of the town, that those statements need to be made through the Department of Communications that we have. They are more than welcome to speak, it's my understanding, under the personnel rules as individuals and as citizens, and, but when they're speaking on behalf of the community or on behalf of the town, they are required to go through, through that department. Also, on 2.3.8, I had some concerns with that about the pay plan, that council will never, will not be required anymore to approve of the pay plan, but I'm confident in our budget process, the extensive process that we go through that will allow us, Mayor, to have a say in how some of the changes are implemented. Moving down, that one was removed, and I think, Mayor, that that, oh, 4.9.1, which was the supportive action, again, increasing transparency, perhaps that type of information that is no longer going to be required, if you will, to be reported to council, and also when correction, even if corrective action isn't taken, when we retain those documents, obviously, that they would be subject to the records laws and as they currently are. And so I appreciate that aspect of this, of this, these changes as well. So Jennifer, thank you for your work on this, Carrie, team, but I would like to hear from Town Manager Baner about some of the report outs or some of the ideas that they might have to keep the public informed.
Please.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council, Councilmember Daniels, we talked this afternoon about that, and I think that would be an excellent idea in regards to, I think, a quarterly report. There's not that many changes that occur on a regular basis. A quarterly report to the council that we could, I can include underneath the manager's comments on a quarterly basis at council meetings and provide a hard copy to you. I think that would be an excellent idea. I'm more than happy to do that.
Thank you. Councilmember Cook?
Just a quick, maybe some feedback. As it relates to the social media and employees' freedom of speech, what happens if an employee says something negative to management or something like that? Is there rules that says how much, as it relates, I mean, social media is obviously new for all of us, so how much of that is acceptable versus non-acceptable in what we're going to allow or not allow as it relates to things related to that?
Mayor Lewis, Councilmember Cook, in this section, it does identify the employees' First Amendment rights as far as what they can speak to as far as being an employee. Part of the idea there is that employees would not be able to say something derogatory or negative or something along that line as part of even using social media or social networking.
Thank you. Other comments, questions? Councilmember Cook?
I had a quick conversation earlier today with staff, and that is on item, let me pull this up real quick here, 6.5, which was the tuition reimbursement.
Yes.
My question I asked staff was that I wanted to find out how long the tuition reimbursement of $5,000 have been in place. I know we've talked about discussions here on the dais about, you know, including inflation as part of different things. I don't know how many individuals over the last many years have taken advantage of that. Could you share a little bit more about that and maybe share with us if the $5,000 is the right number for today?
Mayor Lewis, Councilmember Cook, as far as the $5,000, it has been based upon a calendar year. It is part of, it is taxable. However, the $5,000 has been in place for quite some time. I'm not sure of exactly what time, but I can get that information for you.
And do you know how many individuals have participated in that program within the town?
Mayor Lewis, Councilmember Cook, I do not have those numbers right now, but I can get those for you.
Okay. So Mayor, I just, you know, again, I know education has been going up here in the state, and some of our fine team members may want to take advantage of education. Again, I'm just, was just asking the question about, you know, do we make adjustments in tracking that based upon inflation as well? I just, I might be interested in having a discussion about that.
Thank you. It sounds like with that additional information, that's something that can be considered. Other questions or comments? Councilmember Peterson?
Can you explain to us the, I know you're recommending we don't address the overtime calculation issue tonight, but can you explain the way it works now versus the original recommendation as far as that calculation goes?
Mayor Lewis, Councilmember Peterson, at this point in time, what the rules read is the, there is several types of leave that can be used as part of the calculation for overtime. If the proposed changes were to remove those leave types in that calculation, however, with, upon further discussion, we will not be removing those leave types.
So, but what that, what does that mean as far as, does that mean they could only work four days of the week, take, or maybe they take two days off, but they use two paid days for that, and then they work extra hours when you add it all up, and they get overtime even though they didn't actually work those hours? Those paid days off count towards their overtime. Is that correct?
Mayor Lewis, Councilmember Peterson, some types of paid leave are not. Mayor Lewis, councilmember Peterson, some types of paid leave are not part of it. For example, vacation leave is not part of the overtime calculation. So, there are some, such as, like, sick leave and injury leave, and some other ones that are part of the calculations for overtime.
I guess I'm just trying to understand the logic of why we would include those hours in an overtime. The idea of overtime is that you don't get overworked in a week, and that, you know, it's a labor thing. So, if you're not actually working, I don't, I don't know why we would add those hours in. It just doesn't make any sense to me. And why we're continuing that, I don't, I understand the employees may not want that. They see that as a benefit, but I don't think it makes a lot of sense. And I've never heard of it done before in the industry. So, if anything, it puts us above market, which that's not our philosophy, is to be at market. So, I'm just confused on why we'd act, we would continue that item. It seems like we could address it tonight.
Mayor?
Please.
I've, I have similar feelings, however, in deference of the process, and just making sure as we transition to this new communication approach between our employees and our management, I'm personally willing to give them some additional time to have that conversation. I think that's more than fair, especially the way, just how I heard that this may have been communicated, and just, I think we could have done a little bit better as a team, and so, I think giving them a little bit more time to have that conversation and to fully understand the impacts of it wouldn't really hurt, and, but I do want to, I do want to revisit it fairly soon.
Please.
Mayor, if we have a specific date, I feel more comfortable, but I know that we have so much to do. We've got so many priorities. There's actually, to me, there's so many floating parts on the personnel rules, I wouldn't be opposed to continuing the whole discussion until August 1st or something. I mean, that would be fine. But I, I think it's an important issue, and I think we need, need to address it quickly. There's a value there to the citizens, that they get as many working hours out of their employees, the other ones paying the bill, as possible. And I would like to address that as quickly as we can. So, you know, I'm open to that. I've got some other items. I think we all have some items on this. I think there's quite a few. So, it's just a thought. We'll talk some more.
Are there, listening to that comment from councilmember Peterson, it would be to allow more time for all the items, is what you're saying? All 18 and a half? And I'll see if other councilmembers have feelings to, to do that?
Again, it's really up to staff, but typically, this, the personnel rules come with the MOUs, and that, we did those a couple, a few weeks ago. And so, I don't, I don't know where we're at. I'd love to hear from staff. I'm, I'm ready to move on, on most of it, if not all of it, given what we've talked about removing here tonight and some of these changes. And so, I don't personally see a need, as long as we're committing to revisit this specific issue in a month.
Councilmember Ray, just looking at another example, would you be ready to proceed, or do you have some feelings of maybe wanting to wait?
On the 18 and a half items, I don't have preference either way, whether we move forward. If staff says that those 18 and a half items don't need to be moved on tonight, that they won't have a significant impact, then I'm not, I don't mind waiting if, if that's the place of the council. I would, I would prefer to wait on the overtime situation. I have a few concerns with it. Two of the biggest concerns I have is, one, we don't have any data that shows what sort of problem this is, whether it's a $5 problem, or whether it's a $5 million problem. And so, I'm concerned to, to move on it for that issue. Secondly, we just approved the MOUs for fire and police. And so, if this were to be acted upon tonight, or in a month, one of the problems that I have is, is it wouldn't impact fire or police for at least a year till their MOU ended, but it would impact all the rest of the employees immediately. And so, and I don't think that's the right thing to do either. So, I'm inclined to wait on the overtime one, more than a month, once we can get some data back to see what the actual impact of the problem is, and to what extent it is. And then also, I would be inclined to have it start at the same time for everybody, which would be when the MOU process ends. And that's assuming that it's decided that it's the best option, and it may be the best option, it may not, but I think it would be appropriate to have some dialogue with some of the different employee groups, and, and find out what, to what extent the problem is, to find out if this is the best solution, or if there's other solutions that would remedy the problem without having a potential negative impact on all the employees.
Thank you. Could town leadership give us some guidance on urgency and the need to maybe move forward with some of the items, or is it acceptable to wait?
Mayor, members of the council, I would prefer to move on the majority of the items tonight, for a couple of reasons. One, the, a lot of the changes are to bring it into conformance with the code, Chapter 2, that we changed just a short while back. As well, we want to make sure when we implement this new system, that we do it properly. We do not have that mapped out in its entirety, and we want to make sure it's something that is effective for our organization, and productive, and, and for our employees, that is, it is an effective tool for them to discuss items like this. And I do not believe we can set that up in a month, within a month, resolve this issue, or, or discuss this issue, gather data on this issue, and then bring it back to the council. But I know that we are all in agreement, that it is an important issue that does need to be discussed and brought back to the council. We'd just like to make sure that we set that process up right, because it will be the process that we follow going forward when the, the MOUs expire with the town.
Thank you. And councilmember Peterson, with the comments just made, and then with councilmember Ray's comment, I did hear you say you'd, you'd like to know when we might be talking about overtime. Is there some research that's going forward right now, that we might have at a certain date, information on the current impact?
Mayor, members of the council, we do not currently collect that data. We cannot go backwards in our system. It's somewhat outdated. And parse that data, but we can start tracking that data going forward with the pay periods, and collect it. I would say we'd want to collect it over a, a period of time, to see the true impact of it.
Thank you. Councilmember Peterson, are there additional items on the 18.5 that you wanted to discuss?
Yes, Mayor. So, the media inquiries language is part of the 18.5, is that correct?
Yes.
So, I have some concerns about that. Transparency in government is a must. I think we all agree with that. I'm going to use a quote. Thomas Jefferson said, "The price of freedom is eternal vigilance." And vigilance is not possible without transparency. Not that I need to argue that. I think we all agree. Okay. So, the way it's worded now is, "All media inquiries received by town staff shall immediately notify the Office of Communications and the Department Director before responding." The media inquiries sound like they have personification here, that they can notify. The wording's a little odd. So, first of all, I think it's awkward, needs some, a little bit of work, and I'm not trying to criticize, but it, it needs to be good language for, for a policy. And, second of all, it, it sounds like there's an implied approval that's required from management before they respond, because the wording says, "before responding." And I'm sure that's not our intent. I think that we all agree that any response that's factual needs no approval and should not be screened. However, I do understand the idea that we want to make sure that if there's more information than one staff member may be aware of, that's pertinent to the inquiry, it's, that that also be released. So, I'm open to some change, but, here, but it really can't imply any need for approval, in my mind, without having the unintended consequence of suppressing full transparency. So, I have some proposed language that, I don't know, I'll just read it. It's very simple, and it's almost like what was written, but. Town staff shall notify the Office of Communications and the Department Director of all media inquiries immediately following, or upon responding to the inquiry. So, upon responding would be like if they included in the carbon copy of the reply. If it's not an email, they can immediately let the department know. And that way, if there's a concern that there's more information of whoever was notified, whoever got a response, that there's follow-up, that can be done right away. Any clarifications that need to be done can be done right away. Even this is a little, I, I thought the original policy of make sure it's factual is fine. If, if we're concerned about all being on the same page, that solves it. As long as we're all factual, we're not going to contradict each other. So, I, I'm nervous about anything that could possibly impact transparency. But I think if it's clear that it's not an approval, it's just keeping others in the loop, I think I could be supportive. So, that was one. I'll throw that out there. The, the other one, and this isn't even on here, so maybe we put this on whatever date, I would like to establish a date, even if it's a goal, and we don't end up getting as much data as we need for the other, the collection for the overtime, at least we have the date, and then we can move to continue if we need to. But, the other one I want to talk about is the 4/10s and the holidays issue. And it took me a while to wrap my brain around this one. But, there's, there's an important issue that we need to, to discuss. With the latest budget discussion, it's clear to me that the data indicates that we are not achieving the same efficiency with our tax dollars as we have had in previous years. And I believe the way holidays have been handled, as a part of the new 4/10 schedule, has significantly contributed to this problem. I will make it as brief as I can, but the long and short of the story is, before 4/10s, all employees got nine, well, except for part-time, got nine fixed holidays and two floating holidays for a total of 11. At the eight-hour days, that was 88 hours, right, of paid holiday time. After the 4/10 schedule was implemented, the employees on the 4/10s now had 10-hour days, of course, which resulted in their 11 days becoming 110 hours of paid holiday time. Naturally, the employees on the 5/8 schedule, still on that schedule, complained that it wasn't fair, that they still only had 88 hours of paid holiday, or 22 hours less than the other employees who went to the 4/10s. Of course, they were right. It, it wasn't fair. So, the proposed solution was to add an extra floating holiday for the employees on the 5/8s, which still doesn't make up the difference. But, anyway, I don't know if the council ever really weighed in on this, but I don't think that was a good solution, because it ignores the value lost to the taxpayers in the form of productive staff hours. Now, I don't have enough details. I, I understand it's a pretty considerable task, talking to staff to put this together, but I don't have all the details to give an exact number, but the lost hours translates from anywhere on the low end to five FTEs, to 15 FTEs, or full-time employees. At an organizational average cost of about $90,000 per employee, that's cost, not, not wages, but total cost, that's an ongoing loss of value to the taxpayers, of anywhere from about a half a million to over a million dollars a year. So, anyway, what I'm proposing is that we go back to the original benefit, which was plenty generous, of 88 paid vacation hours a year. So, for the people on the 4/10s, we would simply cut the two floating holidays, and they would end up at 90 paid vacation hours a year. For the people on the 5/8s, we would go back to the nine fixed and two floating, with 88 hours total. They would have still two less hours than those on the 10s, but they would also have more flexibility with some of their hours because of the floating holidays, and I think that'd be close enough. So, with that, I've got some proposed language for that change as well, but I'm going to guess their staff would want to get the exact, I'm fine with that. Again, I just want to get an exact date set, because we're very busy, and it's easy for that to, to get away from us.
I would think that in our overtime discussion, that that could be added. There's a lot of common sense with what councilmember Peterson said, and can we include that in the discussion, and have that be deliverable back to the council? And is there a timeframe that could be estimated tonight?
Off the top of my head, Mayor, members of the council, I would say maybe October 1st. Give us 90 days to get something set up, and vet whatever process we think would be best. Assemble the teams, and then allow us some time for some discussion and data analysis and gathering.
Thank you.
And, and a report back to you.
And councilmember Peterson, excuse me, I, what you proposed, it is, this is a very challenging agenda item, because there's a lot of verbiage and comments we'd like to make changes to, and sometimes bring the whole council to understand exactly what we're voting on, and to make sure that town leadership understands it's a challenge. That's why, when you have something written, it helps. So, I think that would be an, an example of something I would like to have given to town leadership, include in that discussion, if you're okay with that. And that timeframe, first part of October, does that work?
Yeah. October 3rd is in officially scheduled meeting, and that's fine, if that's what it is.
And, back to Susan, and to town attorney Mike, what we've heard so far, so that I don't lose sight of it, the, the two items that you clarified, Susan, I think we have, listening to councilmember, member Daniels, and I should have clarified at the time, there were a lot of good suggestions there. And town leadership had taken some of those comments and incorporated them, but some might still be under discussion. Are there any of the items that councilmember Daniels said that will be changing verbiage that we need to be making note of, or is it, as you listen, do you feel like we're in good shape?
Yes, Mayor. I feel like we're in good shape. I'm not making any changes to any of the proposed language, just adding a recommendation or a request to town staff that they report back to us quarterly. But while I have the mic.
Please.
I would like to respond to councilmember Peterson's changing of the language in 1.8.2, which is the citizen and media inquiries. Councilmember Peterson, I completely disagree with your recommendation, and please let me explain. In the town of Gilbert, with 1,200 employees, we need to know that the left hand and the right hand both know what's going on. And if individual employees are being asked to respond from a, on a personal basis, that does not, this 1.8.2 does not affect their ability to make any type of statement on their own. But if they're going to make a statement on behalf of the organization, I feel like it's imperative that it goes through the Office of Communication Direct, excuse me, the Office of Communications and their own department director. If they are making a statement on behalf of the community as a whole, we must know that the left hand and the right hand both know what's going on. We've had situations in the past, prior to the development, the department being created, where statements are made from multiple departments that are somewhat conflicting. I don't think that's good for Gilbert. I don't think that's good for our citizens, to have conflicting information being provided. And the only way to assure that there is a unified voice coming from the town, as far as town-related activities, town investigation, any, anything that the town is doing, it needs to come from a single source, that does not take away the First Amendment rights of any of our employees. They all have the ability to speak individually, but if it's going to be a statement from the town, it needs to come from one source. And with the guide, even if it's the individual employee, they need to have the guidance of, I think, that department. It shouldn't change the messaging, but it definitely will help us recognize that the left hand and the right hand in the town know what's going on.
The verbiage that is currently there, are you comfortable with?
I am, Mayor.
Okay, thank you.
I would just, I think you just, if you just flip the sentence on that, I'm, I'm actually in complete agreement with councilmember Daniels on this, but to start the sentence, I hate the wordsmith from the dais, but "town staff shall immediately notify the Office of Communications and the Department Director of all media inquiries before responding." That makes more sense.
Town manager Baner?
Yep. Mayor, members of the council, it is not our intent at all to prohibit the sources of the information to present that to the media, for the public's right to know. That is our interest. We share that interest. There are times, one, we should understand what has been said, so that we're aware, we can ensure that all the facts have gotten out there. There are also situations in which the town can be put into a liable position, however, with matters involving litigation, potential litigation, defamation of character. So, there are some times when we do need to be very careful about what we say and how we say it, or to say nothing at all, because we absolutely cannot put the town in a liable position.
Councilmember Peterson?
Mayor, I agree with all of that, and that's all solved if people are following the policy of being factual. I mean, that's already there. If they're not doing their job vetting each question, or their answers before they give them, then that needs to be the focus of our concern. So, I, again, we're not going to have different messages if everyone's doing their job and make sure they get their facts straight before they respond. And this other policy makes it sound like we're very much sanitizing and washing through all the data, so we have, well, I don't know, it's, it's not national security at risk, so I'm not exactly sure what the point is here. Again, let's have full transparency. have full transparency. If people aren't factual, they need to be corrected, and maybe there's disciplinary action. I agree with you. Libel only applies, though, if you're not factually correct. So, again, this is all solved by that honesty is our best policy issue, which we've already had. So, uh, I'm a representative of the town. I'm not gonna call the Office of Communications before I respond. Um, should I? Am I, I'm an employee too, so does that apply to me?
No.
I mean-
Mayor, members of the council, no, it does not apply to any of our elected officials. Um, there are times, even with factual information in a litigation, in which it is in our best interest to make no comment and to let the matter, uh, play out in an appropriate legal proceeding. Um, so there are times in which, um, we should not make any comments, factual or otherwise, to the press in the best interests of the, the town and protecting it from unnecessary liability.
Susan?
Can I just add something? There's nothing in this policy, uh, that, um, would, can't think of a word, stifle a whistleblower, if you will. Those, there are certain, you know, public employees do not have unlimited rights of free speech with, with respect to certain matters, but they do have rights, their, their, their speech with respect to matters of public concern, which is usually the whistleblower kind of situation, um, are protected by the First Amendment. So this is not intended to eliminate that, which I don't think we could eliminate.
What I'm hearing you say is that as you've listened to comments, you feel like the language is there represents the desires of the council. Maybe not, we don't have council agreement, but you're just saying, listening to this, you feel like we have the right language?
I think we have the right language for the majority of the council.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Peterson, do you have other items? Because if we're at a point to take a motion, I think we could go ahead and vote, but were there other items that you wanted to discuss?
No, no, Mayor. That was really it. And if we can get some clear direction on the date for the overtime discussion and for the holidays discussion, did we settle on October 3rd? Okay, then I'm fine with that. And let me just make a comment about the rights. As an employee, you do what your pay to do. I'm not saying it's violating their rights. That's not the point. We have the right to direct them how they should respond to things in the official capacity as an employee of the town. I'm not arguing that. I'm just talking about what will or won't squelch our desire of more transparency, and I just think it's gonna have that unintended consequence. It's fine, we, we're gonna have to agree to disagree, but I do appreciate everyone's comment.
Thank you. Town Manager Baner?
Mayor, members of the council, if I could ask, Councilmember Peterson, could you send me an email very specifically with the, the discussion around the four-tens versus five-eights for the overtime, so I make sure we, we understand that?
Thank you. With that discussion, Councilmember Cook?
Kind of two comments, um, from staff's perspective. Do we look at the other municipalities related to the media requests and see what type of language that our neighboring municipalities had? Cause I'm kinda curious, not to say we're reinventing the wheel, but-
Mayor Lewis, Councilmember Cook, at this point, we did not look at what other towns or cities do, um, as far as their media inquiries.
And then second comment, and again, um, going back to, um, Councilmember Peterson's comments. Again, maybe in the overtime, um, review, and again, I'm just throwing this out, and it may not be a popular particular topic, but in review of why we went to a four-ten work week versus a five-eight, does this maybe a time to review that and see how we did this, you know, over the last, over two-plus years? And maybe we revisit and see if that, again, is still a good, you know, business practice for the town? And then maybe, for some reason, going back to the five-eights might eliminate the whole kinda idea of the, um, overtime pay because it's more consistent across the entire enterprise.
We did have, our study session in Seville, a detailed presentation, it was the update on the four-ten. Not that we can't revisit it, but that, that wasn't too long ago. Were, were there some concerns when that was presented?
No, no concerns, but again, I'm, I'm just trying to think from an operational perspective, the four-tens and the five-eights and the number of hours. Again, this may be so small that it doesn't really have a large impact.
I might need some help from the rest of the council, cause that's six months ago, and I know that was the point, to give us a chance to see what the results were and if we had concerns to move forward. I'm, I didn't hear anything at that point, so I, Councilmember Daniels, you?
I would just suggest that we put that, um, among other things, as part of the agenda for the new, uh, communications process that we're gonna have with the town. Um, when we went to four-tens, there was a substantial burden in changing of schedules and arranging schedules. We did it to save money. Um, that has been accomplished. And Mayor, I would just suggest that, um, that discussion, go to our employee groups that are gonna be having those discussions and the new communications process that we'll be having with our, our town, because we can't, we can't go back and forth multiple times. That's, that's a substantial burden, and so I think those need to be, uh, discussion, uh, discussions amongst staff prior to coming to council.
And Councilmember Cook, did you have a second item?
Well, that was it. But I think, you know, what I like about how we're moving forward, you know, I share and talk about our one-team culture. Again, I, I'm liking what we're doing, and I'm really excited about, you know, the process that we're developing and how we're moving to the one-team culture.
Thank you. Councilmember Taylor?
Mayor, thank you. When I see a couple of things here, to me, the, the trend is, um, we're balancing the transparency issue. So I was really happy when I first met Town Manager Baner and, and heard about all the new ways he's sharing data with the public. It's their data. I, I really like that position. And with the applications, um, that, that are, you know, on our mobile devices, I mean, that's how we're opening the windows and getting people there. So I'm seeing a pattern here where we're, we're closing them a little bit on some pretty important things. So let me just take it in two points and then share with you what my recommendations or thoughts would be on this. So the, the specific points, um, let me just talk about the communication one first, cause to me, that's a little smaller than a couple of these other ones, but just my thought on that is, I, I'm not sure why we needed that, because I, I'm not sure why we're not speaking with one, one voice already. If, if we have an issue that is in litigation, as, as we've heard, what, what I've seen as a best practice is, you know, management will simply, you know, put out a broadcast saying this issue's in litigation. Either save all emails, or, you know, they'll provide the instructions that is, um, you know, relevant to that organization and how they should proceed, you know, under litigation. And so it kinda draws a circle around it. And to me, this casts a much wider net than is, is necessary to protect for litigation, because that's just one issue that, that we need to protect. Um, I think we should, you know, by, I, I think we should speak with one voice. I certainly, um, agree with the statements that we've heard in that theme, um, but when we, when we bring it down, we suffer from lack of efficiency in getting information to the public because we're bottlenecking it. And then you're gonna create some cynicism. I mean, unfortunately, we live in that, that culture where if it's just coming from the person that, you know, spins it, or, you know, sanitizes it or something, that's what happens. And, and I'd hate to see that happen because I know, uh, Town Manager Baner is, as a net, opening up the data. And, and I think that's very positive. And so anyways, that's a thought, that's a smaller issue. The bigger issue for me-
And before we jump to the bigger one, do you have some verbiage? Are you comfortable with us moving forward? Do you have some verbiage that needs to be considered on that item?
My thought is, is just remove it. Um, but if it goes forward as is, I, I think there's good ways, and there's been good recommendations to make it successful, but I just don't know that we need it, because I think we'll start hanging ornaments on this tree that weren't intended when we put it in here, and then the, the iris closes instead of opening, which is what I wanna see.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. The other item, please?
Yeah, the other two was, is with 1.3.2, which is, you know, creating positions without council approval. And then, um, 2.38, the pay plan, approving pay plans without council approval. So, you know, that, to me, I just wanna be consistent. I didn't support this before. I don't support it now. I'd like to see these two things removed. To me, what I would see here is, we could, so what we're saying here is that we will let Town Manager create positions or departments that, as we saw just recently in the budget discussion, could have an eighty to a hundred thousand dollar impact on an ongoing basis, but we're gonna see a fifty thousand dollar, you know, police car that we have to replace. To, to me, that the order of magnitude here is, is off. Um, the, the number one expense in our town budget is labor. And so to say that we're not bringing those things that have some pretty big impact, pay rates, pay plans, and they're not all gonna have these big gigantic, um, you know, media impacts, but labor is a big deal, and new positions require labor and pay plans. So anyways, to be consistent with my previous position, and also just the need to continue to open up and ventilate the information to the public, I think it is important that we do see those. So my recommendation is to not, um, you know, move forward those, add those to the removed list, as we heard before. So, thank you, Mayor.
Susan, you may be able to help me remember on the 1.3.2. A few years ago, town council agenda items included all sorts of details about individual positions and changes in the organization. And the council at that time felt like that was not efficient, because we, as a council, did not know enough information to get into the details and to spend time with the dais. Am I remembering correctly, and is that maybe a representation on this one, that the council said, "Don't worry about telling us unless it's of a greater magnitude," and this is just taking what the council of a few years ago said that they would, feel would be more efficient, and now we're putting it into the personnel booklet?
That's my recollection. Uh, and it's, and, and chapter two was amended to reflect that also.
So informally, we've been doing that, and this is just formalizing it. I mean, that's a very good point from Councilmember Taylor, but I, I guess the experience I had is anytime there was a change, the council would need to have spent a lot of time, and from the dais, it was very inefficient, and the town manager was still giving us updates of, of significant things. So I, I understand your point, but I guess I'm putting the memory of a few years ago and, and thinking how inefficient it was, and so I guess I am now telling myself that I am in favor of this verbiage.
Are you asking me a question?
No, period. You, you helped me remember that that is what, what occurred. Now, I'm just giving my opinion on that. You had a second item, or maybe it was a third item. Did I interrupt you?
I, I covered them both, and that, my two items was one, um, 2.38 and 1.32, just together.
Okay. Thank you. Are we ready for a motion? Councilmember Daniels, do you think you can do it?
Sure. I move to approve the adoption of a resolution amending the personnel rules with an effective date of July 27th, 2013, um, Mayor, without deleting the language in 3.2.4.1, and removing the overtime calculation language in 5.4.4.2.1. And also requesting that we are provided with an administrative report on a quarterly basis with updates on personnel and personnel changes. In addition to that, on 1.8.2, uh, changing the language as described by Council, Vice Mayor Cooper, which he can repeat for us.
Could you do that?
Yes. Um, "Town staff shall immediately notify the Office of Communications and the Department Director of all media inquiries before responding." I've got it here. I'll give it to you.
I actually like that language a lot.
Thank you.
And I, I think I wanna say something. It's listed as 1.8.2, which I had a hard time finding it, because I think it's 1.7.5.
That's what the, yeah, that's what this one said. We have conflicting information on the dais, but-
And I also wanted to point out that section refers to the media relations policy, which is an internal policy, which, which clarifies and, and makes clear the rights of the public, of employees with respect to their public, with respect to their protected speech.
Thank you. So there's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Mayor? I move to amend the motion by deleting the changes, uh, being proposed, uh, on the pay plan, which is 2.3.8, and the changes on the creating positions, which is 1.3.2.
Thank you. Is there a-
Oh, second, Mayor.
Second, okay. There's a motion, second. And please vote on that. That does not pass. Uh, we return to the motion, and there was a second.
I move to amend the motion to, um, change the media inquiry language at 1.7.5 to, "Town staff shall notify the Office of Communications and the Department Director of all media inquiries immediately following or upon responding to the inquiry."
Can you repeat that?
Sure. "Town staff shall notify the Office of Communications and the Department Director of all media inquiries immediately following or upon responding to the inquiry."
Vice Mayor Cooper, how different is that? I'm-
One, uh, what we had, what we were proposing with the original motion is that they notify before, or as, as they receive it.
So the before and after is the key there?
Yeah, this is, the respond first and notify is what he's saying.
Okay. Uh, is there a second on that?
A second.
Okay. That motion's second, please vote. That's not approved with a two-five vote. Thank you. All right, let's return to the original motion, and we have a second, and please vote on that. And that is approved with a five-two vote. Thank you. We move to administrative items. Agenda item forty-two, the railroad quiet zone discussion is our next item.
Good evening, Mayor Lewis and council. I'm Andy Welsh, Assistant to the Town Manager. I do have a very brief presentation, if you would like me to present that, or I am available for questions along with Mike Gillespie, Town Engineer.
Brief presentation, please. In the train hat.
You know, Mayor, I would like to see the presentation.
Yeah. Where's the trainers? Where's the train hat? Who knows? It may just come out when you least expect it.
Okay. Uh, tonight, we are here to seek council direction regarding a preliminary assessment to look at train quiet zones and whether, and to receive a recommendation as to the possibility and feasibility of a quiet zone improvement district along, um, the Union Pacific Railroad. So, uh, just wanted to kind of give you a brief background. The trains are required to blow their horn within a quarter of mile of every intersection. And there are thirteen crossings along the main line and three pedestrian crossings. So at each of those crossings, they blow their whistle. And then there is, there are three roadway crossings along the north-south spur. And wanted to just give you a close-up version of the map that's on the overhead. We looked at a preliminary map and just kind of guessed how the distance, how far wide that, uh, improvement district might be, just to look at some numbers. So our GIS staff put together this map that illustrates a mile off of the, the main line and the spur track there, just to look at maybe what the impacts might be. Um, and a, and a rough estimate of impacted homes is about, um, thirty-three thousand residences, and that includes apartments, condos, and single-family homes, and about three thousand commercial, uh, properties within this one-mile band. That does not include, uh, future development, so that's just what's currently existing, just as a, a visual of maybe what we would be looking at for the impact.
To give clarification on that, thirty-three thousand residences, and in the town, is there about seventy thousand?
Correct.
Thank you. So that's almost half.
Correct. So that concludes my very brief overview.
Let's see, the, um- So the item is presented to us. Is it to do with that overview additional research that we estimate would be $5,800?
Correct.
Okay. Councilmember Daniels.
Mayor Lewis, there is a huge part of me that says the train was here before, the majority of the people that live within that zone, and I'm actually one of the people that lives within that zone. But I do understand the sensitivity, and we can hear the train from our house, and it has on occasion woken up my children, and I look at the train and think, "Well, it was there first." However, I do, I do think that we should move forward with this, but I do have one quick question for Mike Gillespie, Town Engineer. Mike, we recognize we have 13 road crossings, three trail crossings, and a few others. We have requested from Union Pacific Railroad that we have a few more. My fear, and I guess what I would love for you to alleviate for me, is that if we did a quiet zone and moved forward with this, that it wouldn't affect our ability to work with the railroad on those additional crossings that are necessary as part of our transportation master plan process.
Thank you.
Mayor Lewis, Councilmember Daniels, that is correct. It will, this would not affect any new crossings. What we would do is we would design those new crossings to meet all the standards of a quiet zone. We have to work through the railroad and the Federal Railroad Administration, but we would certainly be able to extend, what we would do is have to modify our quiet zone to add that additional intersection.
Mayor, the $5,800 is to fund the research for the feasibility of being able to assess those individuals within that red zone. It's never, it's my understanding, it's never been done in the state of Arizona. We've never assessed for a quiet zone, and so we need to find out if that's legal, applicable, right, Susan? Is that how that's working?
That was actually my first question, what this would be. You can do improvement districts for street improvements. These would actually be street improvements that are at the railroad crossings. Railroad quiet zones are not listed as separate kinds of things you can do an improvement district for, but these are street improvements. And we talked to Michael Cafiso, your bond counsel, we talked to J.R. Poole, who does your benefits assessment for improvement districts, and I was convinced that it would be within your powers, but they're street improvements basically at these crossings.
Helpful clarification for the public, and so this is to assess and come back with feedback, and then it would be a council decision whether or not we would consider it. Okay. Vice Mayor Cooper?
But the assessment is not to understand the political feasibility of a group of residents that may be impacted by a potential district, whether they would support it at the polls, right? This is just to find out, one, if it's possible, maybe what the scope of it would be, and then there's future steps that we need to talk about as a council as to whether the additional steps and expenses that are going to be required, because if you were to take this to the public, you'd want to tell them what they were getting and what it was going to cost, and we're nowhere near knowing that, right? And I think I read in the council communication that knowing that might be another $100,000. Is that true?
Mayor Lewis, Vice Mayor Cooper, to answer your first question, that is correct. This does not include any assessment of the residents and to whether they would support this kind of improvement district. That would come after the assessment. We would come back for more council discussion and feedback, and we would definitely need to look at a public outreach process if this were to move forward. To answer your second question, it also does not, will not address the cost of the improvements. That would be a separate study. We would have to look at all of the intersections and what improvements would need to be made, whether that's raised medians, different kind of arm, that would, arms that would prevent, safety arms that would prevent people from going through the intersection when a train is coming.
Thank you. Councilmember Taylor?
Just to tag onto that question, so what, maybe you state, can you restate what we would get out of this? What are the outcome or deliverables here for this $5,800? If it's not a financial analysis or a cost benefit, what are we getting?
So we would be receiving a preliminary recommendation as to whether we would be able to form the improvement district, and then they would also provide recommendations as to next steps, other studies we might need to do, such as traffic counts, noise studies, what would the improvement district look like, would it be tiered, just to kind of give us some recommendations for next steps. Since this has never been done in the state, we're, we need a little bit more information as to whether this is something that we can do before we move forward.
Councilmember Peterson?
I have a question about improvement districts. So I understand that the property owners would be a part of a vote for whether or not that would be formed. Yes or no?
No. Property owners would have to, if they opposed it, would have to submit petition, objections representing a majority of the frontage of the property that would be assessed. And while I have the floor, well, go ahead. You look puzzled.
Well, because the streetlight improvement districts that we form always have the property owners petition to form them, yes? What's that all about?
Streetlight improvement districts fall under a statute that requires a petition and, for formation. We don't believe, streetlight improvement districts and a couple of other kinds of improvement districts do require a petition. The street improvement districts that we've done in the past and that this is supposed, proposed to be, do not require a petition, but a majority of the property owners can oppose it, and so it takes an affirmative action on their part to do that. I can't tell you why the statute say that, they just say that.
I'm more in favor of it if we have a vote for those impacted, that they can decide whether or not they want to do it. So, but we can talk more about that later, but I just was curious how that worked.
To Councilmember Taylor's comment, that, and we bring those statements together, we could do an assessment that would let us know if we could do it. If we were to do it, the representation that Councilmember Peterson is talking about is the council would be soliciting feedback without a formal vote and trying to make a decision, and there's some uncomfort there. There is, not directly related to the assessment, and I don't know if our town clerk, Kathy, will remember this, and maybe it was informal and not in a formal council meeting, but we did have in 2009, a number of citizens that had requested similar, to have quiet zones put in, and at that time, with the budget challenges, we were given some estimates. And I don't know if we still have access to those numbers. You know, there was a range, and I assume part of what could happen here is to have more detailed analysis, so it would not be such a wide range, but we still had estimates. And is that something that the two of you found? And do you have at least a high-level thought as to what this would mean if we were to put quiet zones in all those spots?
Mayor Lewis, you are correct. There was a study, complimentary study that was done in 2007 by a firm that was also looking at quiet zones for the city of Phoenix, and I believe at the time, they were estimating that the improvements would cost around $1.1 million. And if we were to move forward, staff is recommending that we would need to go out and do a new study and solicit more information in terms of what improvements have been made to intersections since that time. And the council has discussed this issue in both 2007 and 2009 and in the recent past.
Was it $1.1 million for all of the crossings?
Correct.
Interesting, Councilmember Peterson, let me just talk out loud quickly to you. It would seem like $1.1 million, which is a lot of money, but at the same time, in the big picture, not substantial. So that as opposed to forming a district, it might just come back to the council, do we want to spend 1.2, we would clarify that figure, but do we want to spend $1.1 million as a community, realizing it is maybe not benefiting the whole community, but at the same time, to simplify? Would you, listen to this comment, that the district would be organized without really a lot of input, which way would you go?
Mayor, I'm not sure. I'm very lukewarm on this. I've got a lot of concerns. On the one hand, I see a public, there's a true public benefit, and those who benefit the most could pay the most, and, you know, there's a public use function of this. It helps people sleep better in their homes. I mean, there's a real value here, but on the other hand, if they're not going to be the ones solely deciding it, I don't know. At $5,800, I think we could...
Point of order, Mayor, or actually off-topic, we're only allowed to talk about the assessment. Is that correct? We shouldn't necessarily talk about how much it might cost if it does, and if we'd be supportive of what fund?
She's right.
I think it's, well, I actually think it's, it's close enough within the topic that, of whether to...
I'm happy to shut up, I'm happy to shut up now, so that's fine. I'm lukewarm, $5,800 is probably fine to continue to learn more, that's probably...
And do you know the reason why I bring it up, and I'll rush this so we don't elongate it, is if it's $1.1 million, and it makes sense to do it for the community, rather than do an assessment, rather than spend all sorts of time in trying to figure out how 33,000 residents would be assessed and just pay for them, I would simplify and say, if we're going to do it, you know, let's do it and find funds to do it for the entire community, but I, that may not be appropriate. And so that's, that's why I bring it up. But if it makes, if the council feels like we should do the assessment, we can proceed.
Mayor, I know you're trying to speed it along, but this, this kind of got a little cart before the horse for me, and because of the small amount of money and just to know what options we have on the table, I was, I'm okay with going down and finding out whether that option even exists, but it's, we haven't even decided whether it's an issue in the town. You know, there are some residents, and I, there are a few vocal residents that it's definitely an issue for, but this item's on the agenda tonight, and there's not a person here to speak about it. I haven't received any emails, maybe others have, and so the bigger question, which is coming right up, which is, should we spend $100,000 to figure out how much the whole thing will cost, regardless of how it's funded? I don't even know if we have, we need to have that conversation, to be honest. And if the public comes and tells us this is a big deal, and I know there are a few that feel that way, but if there's quite a few, then we'll be listening, but at this point, this is a little bit backwards, if you ask me.
Well said, and I think that's why I was going off tangent or off specific there. So, Councilmember Taylor?
I couldn't agree more. I think, I think those wise comments, let's not create, so with that, is there not resources within the town to go find some of this? I mean, it seems like it's pretty basic information. It's not a big set of deliverables that we're getting, and there's not really, you know, a big problem here that we're seeing. That, that's a thought, is there a way to just do it in-house, get the same result, if we even want to go after that?
Just a quick summary of that, could it be then that what we're saying is to take the estimates without, during the $100,000 study, and just come back with an agenda item that is, assuming it might be in the $1.1 million range, which needs to be confirmed, would we do that? And if we answered that question, not necessarily tonight, and had a little more feedback, made sure that we were inviting citizens, we have heard some from some, and tried to get more feedback as to whether or not it's an issue, is that the direction we should go? Councilmember Taylor, is that, did that reflect what you were thinking? Okay, Councilmember Cook?
It seems like we can just ask Chandler and say, "How much did it cost you to do one?", and we just multiply that by 13, maybe, as a rough estimate?
Here's the reason why that doesn't work, is each of our crossings are unique. There's different requirements and different engineering needs. Sorry, Mike, I just jumped in front of you, but there's, there's different needs for each crossing, which is why they need to be looked at on an individual basis. Mayor, I would, I would suggest we continue this item. Let's put on the agenda an actual discussion about train horns, notify the public, and allow them to bring it, bring their issues and concerns forward, and decide whether this is an actual problem or not before we spend $5,600 trying to understand if an improvement district is possible. But at this point, based on the feedback from the council, that's what I would suggest.
Okay. Let's do it. So with that, do we need to have a vote on that, or just direction given?
We understand the direction.
Mayor, I'm out of order, but that's a good plan.
Thank you. We move to agenda item 44, Board Commission and Committee Updates. Vice Mayor Cooper?
Just a quick report from the Redevelopment Commission last week. They did see the Heritage Marketplace case and approved it, and so we're very excited to see that move forward, and I know that they're working diligently with town staff to get their plans through the system, and should be starting up late summer, very soon actually, so we're very excited about that. Also, we'll just note, this is prob, this is more last month kind of news, but our new restaurants, Joyride and SoCal Fish Tacos, have had great openings, and if you haven't been there, you should, because it's very good stuff.
Thank you. Councilmember Taylor?
Mayor, I'd like to give a report on the Parks Master Plan Project. So Wednesday was the last call for community feedback. We'll always continue to take it, but the last formal call. They had the first revision of the final set of recommendations that they summarized and presented to the community. We had some pretty good turnout, so I was pleased with that. And the next step, so the community knows and can continue to provide input should they want to, is at the next Parks and Recreation Board meeting, don't have the exact date, it is published on our website, I think it's in two weeks, if I'm not mistaken, then they'll formally present it to the Parks and Rec Board and get some additional feedback there from citizens, and then it will come to council. We'll visit that in retreat, and hopefully September, have something to have, take action on in council meetings. So happy, good to see progress there, and congratulations on the team that's worked really hard to pull a lot of details. There's a lot of details in that plan, and I think our community is really going to find a lot of value and education from what we've discovered, looking at ourself and how we compare with other communities, and I think that's one of the biggest values, is just the education of learning a little bit more about what truly are our interests. So congratulations to the team that's working on that. Happy to report, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Peterson?
Mayor, I've been invited as a representative of Forest City to collaborate with the chamber on some new ideas, to engage with our volunteers and engage with the business community together, and excited, we're going to talk more about that. I don't have details yet, it's just in the preliminary stages, but was excited about those opportunities, and I thought I'd report that.
Thank you. Let's move to future meetings. Town manager, manager, an executive session was being discussed. Has that been communicated, has that been finalized?
Yes, Mayor, it has.
And when will that take place?
July 2 at 5:00 p.m.
Okay. And I understand two of the council members will be calling in, and the logistics will be worked out outside of this meeting. Okay, thank you. There's also the building codes. We will have that at a future agenda. In fact, it's scheduled, tentatively scheduled for August 1, and so a question of the council, there have been two council members that have suggested that this would be an example where we would have, a study session would help us on July 30, Tuesday at 4 o'clock, with that being the main agenda item, and of course, you know, we could include an agenda item if we wanted to talk about what's on our August 1 meeting, but how, two council members have suggested that July 30 would be the appropriate time to have feedback given to us for informational purposes. How do you feel about that? So to town leadership, let's go with that plan, July 30, with the main agenda being the building code, feedback, and discussion, but we'll go ahead and include the August 1 agenda, just in case any council members wanted to talk about it. And then I did mention already at the beginning of this meeting, the community patriotic music program, and so I just express again to the Mission Community Church, thanks for hosting that, that'll be Sunday night at 7, and then to Central Christian for hosting the July 4 fireworks show, which is Thursday night, July 4. Any other items on the future meetings? Okay. Town manager, we did shift 46 up earlier, but you may have some more items, so report from town manager and current items.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Couple of quick items. I would also like to echo Councilman Taylor's comments, the hard work put in by our Parks Recreation staff with Parks Master Plan, that was a very long process. There's a tremendous amount of data that was gathered. It's not done yet, but we are getting towards the end. There's going to be a lot of valuable information gleaned that will help provide some guidance to the council and our, the future of our Parks and Recreation System, so I thank them for their effort. for their efforts up to this point. Also, I'd like to thank the Budget Department and Dawn Irvin Irvine and her staff for the great work on our budget and receiving the Distinguished Budget Presentation Award, again, from the GFOA. I also would like to let the community know we had interviews for our Parks and Recreation Directors last week. We're doing some follow-up tomorrow. We had five great candidates from all across the nation. We're bringing three back in for a second look. Tomorrow, we'll spend all day with them. And then hopefully from there, we will move forward in the process and begin some, some background checks. So a lot of great things happening in our Parks and Recreation Department. We'll also be beginning the interview process for our fire chief on April 9th, 10th, and 11th. There is a portion of that that's open to the public. Did I, what did I say?
July 9th, 10th, and 11th.
July 9th, 10th, and 11th. There is a portion of that that is open to the public, so we will get that notice out for the presentation portion. But again, we received some, we have a good internal candidate, and we received five strong candidates from all across the nation for that.
Thank you. Agenda item 47, report from town council members on current events. Agenda item, Councilmember Taylor, please.
Just want to wish the town a happy 4th of July. We probably won't be in session between now and then. And just, if I could just take a quick minute on the 4th of July, I've reflected a lot on Lincoln this year. It's the sesquicentennial of two, you know, major things in American history, the Emancipation Proclamation and the Gettysburg Address. July 1st, coming up here in just a few days, is when the first Battle of Gettysburg took place, first, second, and third. And, you know, just to reflect on that, and, you know, how that impacts, I'll just leave a little thought that I'm going to send out over my little email, is Lincoln just would continue to reflect on the value of the Declaration of Independence. And he called that "the apples of gold and frames of silver." And he reflected on the Bible and a verse in there, said, "A word fitly spoken is like apples of gold and picture of silver." And he just talked about how valuable those principles of, of the Declaration of Independence are, and why we celebrate that. And of course, he expressed that so well in the Emancipation Proclamation, the Gettysburg Address, and his defense for, that all men are created equal. And anyways, I apologize for taking time to express that, but this is just such a great thing that we have, that's unique to us as Americans. And the birthday of our country is just a great thing to celebrate. Thank you.
Thank you. Agenda item 48, a report from the mayor. I believe I've given a report, and so I'll just end with a question that was given to me, and I think it'll be good for the public to hear. The question was, there are two days that fireworks are allowed. Is it three? Because I wasn't sure if it was July 3rd and 4th or 4th and 5th, but is it July 3rd through 5th? Okay. So that's my current event, is fireworks are allowed in the town of Gilbert, July 3rd, 4th, and 5th. And happy 4th of July. Meeting adjourned.